Today's Monday, December the 5th, and the McDowell County Board of Commissioners are now in session. We welcome everyone to our meeting tonight, and as customary, we begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. If everybody will stand west, Commissioner Brown, do our pledge. Commissioner Peters, listen to prayer.
By our heads. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all your goodness and your mercy. We thank you for the good things that you've done for us in the past week, and we thank you for that that you're gonna do. We pray, Father, that you guide us in the right direction on the things that we do here tonight, that everything we do, Father, be to uplift thy name and uplift our county and the citizens within it. In Jesus' name, amen.
First pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As customary, at our December meeting, we always choose a chairman, vice chairman, and we turn the meeting over to our clerk at this time. Well, that's right. At this time, we'll approve our minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the November 10th meeting and also the November 14th regular session minutes.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, the most say aye. Aye opposed, light sign. Okay, gentlemen, you have the agenda before us. What's the pleasure of the board?
Most approved, Jim is present in the staff.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, light sign. Okay, now we'll move to item A on our appointment schedule. This is a selection of chairman and vice chairman, and at this time, we'll turn it over to our clerk. Madam Clerk, go right ahead.
Thank you. At this time, I will now take nominations for chair.
Nominate David Warburg.
Are there any other nominations? Will all in favor say aye? All opposed? I will now take nominations for vice chair.
Madam Clerk, I'll nominate Barry McPeters.
Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
All right, first thing we need to do is welcome a new board member. We have Lynn Green with us. Randy is no longer a commissioner, and Mr. Green is now on the board. So, Mr. Green, welcome to the board, and look forward to serving with you.
Good to be here. Look forward to serving with you.
Thank you. Let's move to the next item on our appointment schedule, and we have our distinguished school superintendent, along with school board members and their chairman here. Well, is their chair, there's their chairman over there, Mr. Frank. And at this time, Mr. Garrett, if you don't, or Mr. Terry, come on up, sir. I see you're being pointed to. So, you go right ahead. The floor is yours.
We are so honored to have you guys as our commissioners, and I want to kind of enlighten the folks here about the good things that you've done in collaboration with the school system. We have a joint education committee that meets at McDowell Tech on a regular basis, once a month, and of course, Tony Brown's there, and David's there, and the college president, as well as superintendent of schools, and of course, Mr. Wooton. And I'm telling you, we accomplish great things, and nobody is trying to steal anybody else's thunder, and we're just, it's such a great thing that we can work together. But let me tell you some of the things that we've accomplished through this is, we've expanded our one-to-one. We've got it down through the middle schools now. Not only that, but you guys are helping us with our teacher supplement, and by next year, we should be in line with Burke County, which is gonna be good for us. And there's so many good things that go on at that board meeting between everybody concerned, the college, not only the college, but the school system, and also the county commissioners. And we had an opportunity at our North Carolina School Boards Association to nominate you guys as the best county commissioners in the state of North Carolina, and I don't take that too lightly, but you guys won probably by landslide. Brian wants to address that, because most of the folks down there say, "How in the world do you get your county commissioners to even work with you?" And you guys are always, "What do you need? What do you need? What do you need?" And we've got a big project coming up with Old Fort School. We know we've got to get it built, and we're gonna push it through, and you guys have already said you're behind us and gonna really kick us in the rear if we don't get it done. And so, at this time, if you guys would come forward, we're gonna present you this plaque, and all the school board would come up as well. We'd appreciate it.
Where do you want us, Mr. Chairman?
Definitely get your pictures right here, so let's get everybody together. Normally, we all get that.
Well, let's make the presentation.
Jim, when it's my own, we have to, first of all, like Mr. Frank said, when I go to Raleigh for some of my meetings and talk to other board members across the state, what we have, they don't. They're letting heads all the time. So, we certainly appreciate you guys and what y'all do for us. I'd like to present you that plaque.
And, Mr. Chairman, I want to remind you that that was a unanimous nine-zero vote for you guys. Everybody.
Well, it's, it's an honor for our board guys to work with these men and women. Our school board, you guys are charged with the education of our children, and this board takes that. It's a big deal with our board, and we want to make sure you have the resources and what you need to do the job, and we'll always stand beside you guys. Anything else you want to add, guys?
It's just, it is a privilege. You know, I served on education. Communication's another one I do, but being able to sit there and communicate, and it's all about the kids. It's not about us. It's about educating those students out there, taking what they know and who they think. It's a great group to work with.
I think probably a lot of the issues that we face as commissioners with adults could be prevented in school, and that's with education. Issues that we have with jobs, not being able to be good quality employees, that starts in the high school, and elementary and middle schools. You have one of the most important jobs in this county, and it's to make sure we have a future that's well educated, and I'm correctly appreciating all the work you do.
Well, guys, it's an honor to work with y'all. I enjoy being on that community, and I have the kids at heart, and I have the leadership at heart, and I have a vow to leave that I will continue to uphold.
And Lynn, you served a deal, right? You were once a school board member and now you're a commissioner, so.
Hadn't served on the school board for two terms. I understand what you guys face, and I just hope that I can be a scotch for you and help you, and whatever your endeavors are. We're behind you 100%.
I would only reiterate, for what Chairman Frank has said, guys, thank you for working with us, and we're looking forward to some great progress. Thank you so much.
Just, I'll re-echo the same thing. It's been a pleasure, and I look forward to the future.
Here we go. We're gonna get, we're gonna get Old Fort's old plan, and I also want to say thanks.
I would like to say thank you very much, because keeping kids first is keeping the future in mind.
So, if we can kind of get everybody together, can I just measure our own volume?
Okay, after a brief recess, the board is back in session, and we're on our appointment schedule currently, and we are at item C. This is the new baseball camp project. We have some local men who are here tonight to present their vision and their goal in helping the youth of McDowell County have more opportunities, so we're all about that. Donnie and Dennis, glad to have you guys in the boardroom tonight, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, guys, very much. First of all, it's an honor to be here, especially with you guys. I think I'm supposed to tell that Tony taught me everything I know on baseball. Excuse me, Commissioner Brown, and Commissioner McPeters beat me to death in basketball growing up, but he was 15 years older than I was. Wanted to get that in. That was the most important. But this is a great honor. This is, everyone calls this my baby, which it is. I've been thinking of this for 10 years, since I was a coach at TC Robertson High School, and just 10 years ago, started finding out that kids were a little different today in their work ethic and their mental toughness and mental capability of what they were doing. And as I became a scout for the San Francisco Giants, it was reiterated with what I was seeing on the field, even at the high school level, even to the point where I saw a 15-year-old kid miss a ground ball and break down and start crying on the field. And I thought, I didn't do that when I was six years older. My dad would have ran me off the field. So, the vision started coming clear. I talked to Dennis on a piece of property and about our vision and what I wanted to do, and Dennis, being the real estate guy, one of the great ones in McDowell County, helping us out to find a piece of territory for this. We went around and around and run into some problems with the railroad and some other things, and you know, being a big Christian guy, prayed about it, went and saw my folks who had a camper down on Lake James, and I passed this piece of property. And my dad was with me. He said, "There's a piece of property that may be good for you." I said, "Dad, it's on Lake James. I'm not trying to break my budget here for what I'm trying to do." And called Crescent Timber, who owned the property. Long story short, I threw an offer at them, lowballed, thinking they would come back, and they accepted my offer and told me that Madison Bumgarner had just bought some land from them, so that I was, they were making up the difference through Madison. So, I left Madison a text message, said, "You don't know what I'm talking about, but I appreciate you doing that." So, it came to fruition, basically, that the dream was coming true. So, then I had to look for the right partners, and there was one guy that coached with me a long time ago at TC Robertson, Jeff Bryant, who is the vice president of Volvo Construction in Asheville. And Jeff and I had, you know, dreamt this up several years ago, and I said, "Okay, baseball and softball people," because I have a daughter, and I knew I could not leave her out, or it would be, my name would be mud. So, we actually turned this in, commissioners to baseball and softball. So, the girls will get a chance to do the same thing that the guys will, and you know, my daughter's 10 right now, and really giving my son, who's 14, a handful. So, the mental toughness part, I don't know if genetic or what, but so we brought in softball with this. Then I started thinking, okay, who are my softball people, my coaches? And Stacy Chris with AC Heating and Air came to mind, because my daughter and his daughter play together. And Stacy is a great guy in the community and would be a great asset. So, then I started, well, it all started with Dennis. So, I need to ask Dennis if he'd like to be a part of it, and he did, and I couldn't ask for better partners already. We have actually cleared on that property in 10 days about 17 or 18 acres, just us by ourselves, cutting the trees, bulldozers and stuff. And we had a good plan on how to attack it. But to give you a little idea about what the camp is, I know, and I didn't even start my stopwatch. I've got 15 minutes, which is not working good for me, but I'll try to tell you. What we have here is camper cabins. If you look at the picture there, there's 12 camper cabins. This is where in the summertime, we will house our campers that come in from everywhere. Right now, I have 12 Canadian teams coming down over the time period. And just to give you a little idea of the calendar and how it'll fall, starting June 1st, you know, when those kids are out of school, we'll bring in six teams of 15 kids every five days. So, every five days, there's gonna be 96 kids from all over the different states and countries come into McDowell County to work baseball. One week's baseball, 13 to 15. The next week is girls softball, 13 to 15. The following week is boys baseball, 16 to 18. The next week is girls softball, 16 to 18. So, we're running the age groups through there, week by week, and then starting over in a time period for the whole entire summer. So, when the kids come in, what they'll do on the first day, Sunday night, they'll check into their cabins. We'll get them situated during the day. The first morning, they'll do baseball instruction. We'll say baseball for the first week. They'll go offense or defense with college coaches. I'm bringing in college coaches from North Carolina, Clemson, and every other big D1 school, not volunteer assistants that just are there trying to make money, but actual good coaches that can teach these kids. So, we're practicing in the morning. After their practice is over, they'll do three outdoor activities. We'll have archery. We have fishing. When you say fishing, how's that mentally tough? We'll give them a fishing rod, and don't give them any bait, and say, "Good luck." So, you've got to figure that out. So, we send these players out on their teams, give them a fishing rod. We do arch, like I said, mud run, lumberjacking. I didn't know how tough it was until the last 10 days, but I'm more mentally tough after this myself. But crosscut saws, the old-tummy crosscut saws. We've got a pair of kids running each one, and they got to work together to cut the log in half. And several other, you know, outdoor activities, fire starting with that, and understanding how the dangers and stuff of that is. But we've got another piece of land right on the lake where the canoes will be put into the water, and they've got to paddle their entire team around the buoys up there. So, you've got one guy paddling your teammates and eight or nine in each canoe, and they're depending on you to get them back around there, and then they swap. So, there's a lot of challenges going on, and in today's society with the kids, they say, "Well, what's in it for me?" And that's the first thing. It's entitlement generation to where, I didn't really understand it until Halloween, when I had a trick-or-treater come up, and I gave him what I thought would have been a great trick-or-treat bag, and he said, "One more, please." And I said, "Okay, let me just give him another one, I guess." Then the next kid, two times later, came by and said, "You're welcome." I said, "Wait a minute. I gave you the candy. You're supposed to say, 'Thank you.'" No, it's not like that anymore. So, what we're trying to do with the new entitlement generation is get them to understand, if you work hard enough, you can earn points as a team. And when you earn these points as a team, at the end of the week, we're gonna crown a champion out of the six teams. And once you get crowned that champion, you have a chance to be one of the finalists over the summer, and after the two months of the summertime workout, whoever has the most points generated for the team comes back the following year for free as the champion. And for kids to really think that they get to come back and do all this again for free and everything, they're gonna work harder, and it's gonna be a good competition. That's the camp aspect. Now, you say, "Well, what are you gonna do after the summer's over?" Well, we follow it up. We've got several different things, actually. College baseball is coming in from January through March. So, I'm bringing in already. Michigan State is committed. We've got Ohio State. We've got several college baseball teams that live up north, and it's snowing in the January and February months. So, they usually go down to Florida to play. And I said, "Okay, how much does it cost you to go to Florida to play?" And they said, "$15,000 for the weekend." And I said, "That's your travel housing and everything." So, I started putting the numbers together, and with us owning our own cabins, Bruce's Fabulous Foods is doing our catering, and really worked up a great deal. He's an Indians fan. It just cost me a few tickets to their game, so he agreed to cater our food. But basically, we are bringing in college baseball teams for $6,000, which we're cutting that and saving them that much money. Plus, they're not traveling to Florida. They're stopping halfway. I asked the coaches, I said, "Why do you go to Florida and then go back to Ohio? So, you're going for summer to, back to the wintertime, and you're getting beat in Florida because you're not ready, and then you get shell-shocked going back to the wintertime where it's snowing?" He said, "That's a great point. I don't know why we do that." And I said, "Well, why don't you stop halfway and let us save you some money, and you bring baseball to McDowell County?" Because there's a lot of baseball fans here. And so, basically, we have college baseball going on from January to March. Then after March is over, we've got some concerts planned for the venue up there. We've got weddings already planned up there. We've got all kinds of stuff, and I've just recently hit up with field hockey and soccer. So, I don't know if we're building it big enough, Dennis, so we're gonna have to think about this stuff. But eventually, I would like to have, the indoor facility is 11,000 square feet right there in the middle. There's actually an entire baseball infield inside that. It's got two generated virtual reality pitching machines. So, really, you see a kid, if it's softball, you see a girl in the age group, a video of her, and when she releases it, the ball comes out. I can make it do different spins, different speeds, so it looks like you're facing a real-life player on the field. No more waiting on the light to come on and throwing your timing off and everything else. So, it's virtual reality. People want to know, how do you hit Kershaw? How do you hit Bumgarner? It's because they cheat, and they use these virtual reality machines. For two weeks, they're hitting off of them before they face them. Ted Williams would roll over in his grave if he knew he could have done that. But so, it's, there's a lot of stuff going on up there, and like I said, it could go for more than 15 minutes, and I don't know where I am right now. Dennis is supposed to be helping me, and he's not doing that. But this is our vision. This is our dream. The income for McDowell County, here's what I always said. I said, "How can I benefit the kids from McDowell County and let other people pay for it?" And this is the way we're doing it. Kids from other states come in and pay for the camp. Our indoor facility is open year-round to the local kids. We work with them. We get them better. We bring college coaches in, and we give them opportunities. I always said, you know, if more, you know, college scouts and pro scouts would have come to McDowell County, you know, I would have had other opportunities other than the few that I had. And I played football. Coach Brackett, who was here earlier, I played for him. But I played everything because I thought, "That's the only way I'm gonna get the chance to go to college," was to play everything. And whatever I became good at, that's what I'd have a chance to go to school at. And that's the way every kid thought back then. Now, with the way the prices have jumped up there, we want to give every kid the opportunity that he may not have got in other places. But this is, it's huge for our county. There's a lot of stuff going on up there. We estimate that we're gonna run in one week during the summers and stuff, that we're gonna run about 400 people through this facility every week. And hotels, other things are going up, and I know there's some plans, you know, for different things to help us out. And like I said, this is something that's huge for us, and we're excited about it.
Okay, questions or? Sounds great, Donnie. Any questions for Donnie? Comments?
He mentioned Jeff Bryant, a while ago from Volvo. You'll never meet a more nicer, just down-to-earth person in all your life. He came in over at Little League and did some stuff for us, sent his vehicle down here, paid for everything, wouldn't even let us fix his tire when he flattened it. But he just, I mean, just a all-around good guy. But if him wanted to come from TC down to here, it's just amazing. But he is. He's, if you ever meet him, I don't think he's here right now, but if you ever meet him...
Working. We left him to work.
He left him to work. But he is just a super, super person.
Yeah, one thing that you guys aren't seeing here, too, we've got 124 acres on this piece of property, and we've left us some room for another close-to-my-heart thing, and that's Little League baseball. And it looks like, you know, they're gonna run into a problem with not having a field. There's the church over there. Grace is wanting to take the field back over. So, Little League baseball in East Marion, like we knew, it's not gonna come to an end. But good thing is, I've got a spot for Little League baseball, and it's already flat, ready for lights. Once we put the lights on that, and we have these three fields, which you can turn ours into the same base paths, this is both turf. Both of those are astroturf. The softball field's even astroturf. So, we can play through snow, rain, whatever. We'll never have a rainout. So, when we do the Little League baseball field, we'll have three fields there, and we could actually host the tournaments, state tournaments and stuff, by having three fields, and they're lighted, which is gonna bring more income to the county. If you look at Greenville, South Carolina down there, and what they built with the Little League World Series, it's unbelievable, the complex, and the revenue that they brought in to Greenville was unbelievable. And so, we're looking to do the same thing here. And I was telling my wife, she's a school teacher. I love her to death, and David Price, the left-handed pitcher for the Red Sox, signed the contract. She said, "How did he sign for so much money?" We started looking at the figures. If you take half of David Price's salary, you guys probably don't realize this, but half of his salary, it would put another assistant in each classroom in North Carolina, public schools in North Carolina, off of his, half of his salary, just half of it. You could put an assistant in every classroom in the state of North Carolina. And my wife said, "How is that possible?" And I said, "We are in an entertainment society. We pay for entertainment, and we'll pay whatever we have to." And that's kind of what we're seeing here, you know? The people are ringing my phone off left and right. When can I sign up and everything else? So, if we can bring that money and that income generated through baseball and softball to the county for the other things that we need here, we'd love to do that and keep it here.
Yeah, that's a home run, because travel baseball, these kids, parents, when they go, they stay a whole weekend, motels, eating out, gas, I mean, whatever else the kids need while they're in whatever town they're in. And our board, our board's gonna look at capitalizing on that, and you're already ahead of us in what you're doing here. And so, we just fully support what you're doing. We're so excited about this, and the public's really excited about it. I mean, I've heard Seth Tony was down there when you had your ground, well, I guess, the groundbreaking day, and he was there, and just everywhere we go, we're hearing nothing but positive things about this.
And so, we are. We're excited, and just to see kids benefit from it here and be local kids and future titans, I'm really excited, too.
Okay, Donnie, thanks so much. Dennis, appreciate you guys, and the investment you're making in McDowell County. We appreciate that. We don't take it for granted. Okay, we'll get the lights. We'll move on to our next item. This would be, we have a 5:30 appointment. Item D, this is the Mountain Valleys RC&amp;D update. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, certainly. It's out.
Yes, Ms. Hoakes had asked to be before you again to give an update on Mountain Valleys' RC&amp;D in general, but also talk about some of the projects that that organization's worked on in McDowell County. And one of those that's been, that she'll talk about is the Old Fort Ball Field River Restoration. It's a project that we have been trying to find sources for, for probably 10 years or more. So, it's something that finally, the stars aligned, and Mountain Valleys has helped out with that, and they've done a great job. So, I'll turn it over to Jessica, if that's okay.
Thanks for having me here tonight. Like Ashley said, I'm actually visiting all the eight counties we covered, just to kind of give a little bit of background about our organization, but in this case, just to give you a project update, so that you're familiar with what's going on at the Old Fort Ball Fields as well. So, this packet, this flyer right here gives you a little background on our information, the types of projects that we do. So, this update will be brief, because a lot of it, you can see in here. You can see who our council members are, and those are appointed by Soil and Water and the county commissioners. And then I also put a card in here, along with a lot of water quality projects. We also do a lot of renewable energy cost share programs for farmers primarily, but now we also are helping out small businesses. So, if you know of anyone who would be interested in grants for renewable energy, the price of solar is extremely competitive right now. So, and with the tax credits that are available, we can do consult consultations on the return of your investment, and energy audits are available through that, too. So, I put that in there with my card, if you want to follow up on any renewable energy projects for farms, small businesses, or if you have any other projects in McDowell County that we could check out. That's how this started at the Old Fort Ball Fields, and I just took a couple of pages of photographs that were part of our grants package that just showed the location, the erosion that had been identified by the Soil and Water Board, and then in a partnership with McDowell Soil and Water, Mountain Valleys and Soil and Water received two grants. We have one from Duke Water Resources Fund, and we have another one from NC Deener, the Division of Water Resources. So, this project here, when I visited the site with Wildlife Resources Commission, they were very excited, because they said, "It's very rare that you see a site that has such public access, is trout stocked, and has the potential to be handicapped accessible." And some of you might have been here when I gave the update on this project a while ago, but they were very enthusiastic. Not that they would necessarily go in and build piers, although there are the handicapped accessible piers that you probably all are familiar with, but even is there the potential through that meadow that runs along the river to connect with the county greenway system, and even just have some pullouts where someone could cast a line into, as you see on the bottom picture, really beautiful river and piece of the Catawba Headwaters. So, we have the funding in place to do the stream restoration. Wildland Engineering is doing the engineering. They've received a letter of support from Fish and Wildlife and Wildlife Resources Commission on their design, and they have also received one of the two permits that are required. And so, construction is planned for, we want it to start by February 1st, and to be completed by March 3rd is the goal. So, hopefully, we'll stay on track with that timeline. But Wildlife Resources Commission is fairly non-committal at this point. They want to see what it's like, once the stream work is done, what, they want to see the river return to a natural flow, kind of see those riffles and pools before they can commit to their piece of the project. But yeah, I think, even if we didn't have a lot of funding for the trail construction piece, I don't, I don't think that that would cost very much, even if the trail just extended to that far parking lot and came around the park. But, and I haven't seen the county But, and I haven't seen the County Greenway plan, this might be a later phase that hasn't really been created yet, but I think that, at this point, we're just trying to get through this initial stream repair, and then we will, you know, play it from that lie and see what comes next, and how this fits in with County Greenway. So, did you all have any questions about the stream repair, or any other Mountain Valleys projects?
And the stream repair is what you're talking about starting in February?
Yes. And so you can see the pictures of the erosion, and like Ashley said, Ashley's a council member on our board too. But this is something that they had been trying to find funding for, for...
I've been up there and looked at it firsthand.
Many years.
I know what, I know what it is and what it's like.
So really, it's, it's not that large of a stretch, and it, when, once they get in, they should be able to get out relatively soon. I don't see them being in there more than a couple weeks to a month. And so because the project's under 90,000, it can be an invitation to bid process, so it'll go to a select group of contractors.
What type of work, what are they going to do when they actually get in or start the project? Are they looking, I just, I'm looking at the picture right here, it looks pretty bad.
Well, they're going to, hopefully, well, the, we're wanting to put a trail between the outfield fence and the river, and so the outfield fence may come out temporarily during construction, and then wanting to preserve that 10 feet of a walkway in between the two. They're really going to have to lie that bank back, so they're going to have to take that stream bed and move it back. But on the other side of the bank, there's also a wetland that needs to be protected too. So there's going to be a berm that protects that wetland, but essentially, everything's going to be moved over.
Will the, and you may have mentioned this, I was looking and not listening as much as I should have, but will the Arm Corps of Engineers be involved in any of this?
They're in the, they're the ones who issue the 401 and 404 permit, and we've received one out of two. And they don't expect any hiccups. And like I said, the Wildlife Resources Commission and Fish and Wildlife have looked at the design, and they don't see any problems with it. So it should be, hopefully, any day now that we get that second permit required. It's going to be an excellent project and opportunity for people to enjoy trout fishing in our area on a handicapped-accessible potentially trail.
I mean, it's a great opportunity to fix a problem.
Exactly. Take that problem and create an opportunity.
Fix it now or fix it later.
Yeah, if you don't fix it, you don't have to.
But that's really the primary, we have a lot, the energy initiative is region-wide for all of our counties, and we're also wanting to do the same thing with fire wise, to take these, a lot of times, especially in a situation where you have a gated community, and the roads haven't necessarily been mapped, the gate might have a code to sign up communities to do fuel reduction, whether it's a chipper or dry hydrant installation, that's another region-wide initiative that we have. But we're wanting to do a great job on this project and get more projects in McDowell County. So please keep our CND in mind, and my business card is in there too, if you have any questions on this project, or thoughts for future projects, opportunities to participate, that'd be great.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks for the job you're doing down there.
Yeah, my pleasure, and we'll, we'll keep you updated.
Sounds good.
Happy holidays.
You too, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, this time we're just a little bit ahead of schedule, but I see the participants for the next item on the agenda are currently here, so I don't believe in making them wait, so let's go ahead and move forward. And let's hear about the teen court program. And we have Natalie and Mary with us today, or tonight, and, and, of course, how can we get Chris over there? Chris, y'all come forward, and we welcome you to the boardroom, and we hear you gladly. At this time, we'll take a brief recess for technical matters. Okay, after a brief recess for a technical matter, the board's back in session, and we want to welcome Mary Finley and Natalie Gooch and Chris Marsh with us, so the floor is yours.
Hi, good evening, thank you for having us. Before we get started, I want you to take just a minute and think about some of the mistakes that you made as a teenager. I won't ask you to share, we won't discuss that.
David, quit confessing.
But thankfully, you know, a lot of us were not caught, or if we were, we were given a second chance. And that's what teen court is about, is giving these teens a second chance to continue on and be a better citizen.
All right, and so our journey with teen court, I wanted to share a little bit of information with you about that. This all began really when we took our McDowell Believe and Achieve Team, which is our dropout prevention team, to Wilmington. And there, we learned a lot about teen court. We've also made several visits to Wake County to see their teen court. And to tell you the truth, it's probably one of the best programs that I've ever seen. It is completely amazing. We've also been to Buncombe County, they also do a peer jury teen court. We were not as impressed with Buncombe County as we have been with Wake County, but we're really excited to be here tonight, to share with you information about what it is teen court, what all it entails, and just some data.
Okay, so Natalie's done, Natalie and Mary both have done quite a bit of research into this, and I won't read right off this prompt, but for me, for me, teen court is kind of close to my heart. Over 16, around 16 years of law enforcement, one of the best jobs I've ever had in law enforcement was when I was a school resource officer. And I've said it many times, it's one of the best kept secrets in law enforcement. When I was a campus school resource officer, I really started, I really started discovering how much I loved being around the students, loved being around the schools, and interacting with them. One thing that I saw immediately being a school resource officer, is there's this zero to 100 miles an hour when it comes to crimes that are committed on campus. Now, that's no one's fault. That's not the school system's fault, it's not the central office's fault, it's not the commissioner's fault, it's not the teacher's fault. It's the nature of the beast, and it's because there's no in-between program. I'll give you an example. When I was growing up, and even back in stone ages when Barry was growing up, if you got into a fistfight on campus, then usually that could be handled there, and we move on. We're talking 20, 30, 40 years ago. Now you get into a fistfight, or bring a pocket knife on campus, I can go on and on and on these different misdemeanor crimes, we're living in a different society. And what's going to happen is one of two things. Either nothing's going to happen with regards to the criminal charge, and I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about discipline at school. Either nothing's going to happen with a criminal charge, because, well, we don't want this kid to, you know, we don't want this kid to get in trouble and have to come charged. Or all the way to 100 miles an hour, which is, kid's going to walk out in a set of handcuffs. Now, keep in mind, as we're talking about this, again, I don't want to read right off this prompt, there's some information we'll bring out to you, but what you need to keep in mind is, the only students that are eligible for this program are first-time offenders with a criminal offense. And you need to really wrap your head around that, because you can start getting into, well, but what if this, and what if this kid's been in trouble, time and time again? That's not the kid. Now we're going to send him to the criminal justice system. We're talking about a student who has never been charged with a criminal offense, not convicted, I mean, never even been charged. If you've been charged with a criminal offense through the juvenile system or through the criminal system, you are not eligible for this program. So first of all, keep in mind, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about decent students who've made a mistake, and again, I think we could all go in, like Ms. Finley said, and probably laugh and we think about several times in our childhood growing up, that had we been in 2016, you'd been walking out of school in a set of handcuffs. And I don't, for me, that was when this opportunity first kind of came on my radar. So again, we're talking about between ages of nine and 17, first-time offenders. As they go through this slideshow, you're going to see a list of offenses that are being used by the other teen courts in Wake County. These are some things that we would be able to decide as a program, with input from the sheriff's office, with input from the commissioners, from the school system, you know, what we would consider to be an offense, what would not. I will tell you that felonies are not eligible. If it is a felony, it is not eligible for teen court. Period, plain and simple, we've never found in all the travels and research that we've done, any program that would allow a felony to be a part of that. So for any police officers in the room, this is kind of backwards, because level one is their lowest offenses, but for us, that would be one of the higher misdemeanors. So any of the police or attorneys in the room, you've got to flip this around. Nonetheless, starting with the level one offenses, these are just some examples, afraid, disorderly conduct, trespassing, and again, some other charges that would be subject to screening. Level two offenses, with these, you're going to see a lot of offenses that are around the retail setting, and the reason being is because these are from Wake County, and whilst Wake County have a lot of malls and retail settings, and so they are plagued with kids who get in a group of five or six, go in the mall, hey man, take that hat away, grab that hat, whatever, get the hat and walk out. So nonetheless, larceny shop business, stolen property, price switching, concealment, property damage, communicate threats, no operator's license, misdemeanor, simple assault, and of course, other that would be subject to screening. These would be your level three, or the highest offenses. Again, all these are taken from research that we've done regarding the other counties, misdemeanor, simple assault, breaking and entering, largely more than $200. Again, you'll see some of those property and retail setting charges. Possession marijuana, less than a one-half ounce, which is a simple possession in state of North Carolina, that's, there's another possession that's an aggravated possession, but that would not be a choice that we have seen used. Possession of drug paraphernalia, possession of a weapon, not a firearm, this is, this would start getting to your campus charges. Possession alcohol, dangerous drinking, and cyber stalking or internet bullying. So you see, you see a wide array of charges that are on there, the common denominator is that they're misdemeanor. And again, think about, this is your first-time kid who's got in trouble for doing something, quite frankly, stupid. So who refers these cases to teen court? This was one of the first questions I had as a police officer. How do they get from point A to point B? This is not just the school setting. This presentation, the times that we presented, a lot of folks just get their head wrapped around that we're just talking about schools. We're not talking about just schools, it could be Deputy Patrick working on Saturday night, and he catches a kid spray painting the side of a train somewhere, so how is that going to get from point A to point B? Well, school administrators, I would think that the bulk of these are probably going to happen on campus. School administrators, school resource officers that are there at the school, obviously, they would bring them in, see if they meet the criteria to be referred to teen court, if they can do it. The police and sheriff's offices, even the magistrates, right there if they've got a kid, maybe even in a set of handcuffs. And there, at the magistrate, the magistrate can take a step back, take a quick glance at a criminal history and go, you know what, you know, what do you think under the circumstances that we do a referral with teen court? So there's a lot of opportunities, and obviously, JCPC and juvenile court counselors, in conjunction with the assistance of this attorney. I could also see, you know, Kent Brown and Michelle and those guys kicking some back and saying, hey, we've seen this kid's criminal history, he doesn't have one, this would be a really good opportunity maybe for this student to have a poke criminal, or teen court. So that's another option as well. So we talk about teen court, and I'm talking fast, you guys, I'm trying to stay on time here. We talk about teen court, we're talking about sanctions. So what are those sanctions? Again, those can be decided by the individuals that put this together, all the way to the district attorney's office. Some common ones that are used are community service, jury duty, skills group, they have a great one in Raleigh that we're trying to get down to take a look at, it's called Choices, where they use the local prisons to bring in a group of inmates that are about to be released, middle and custody inmates, and sit down with those kids, kind of in a pretty intimate setting, and allow those inmates to say, man, you don't want to do what I've done for the last five years, eating bologna sandwiches and sleeping in a cold bunk. You would not believe this program that they've got in Wake County, it's amazing. It's not a scare tactic program, it's not a getting the kids face and scream, it's a really sit-down kind of common sense conversation, for some folks who've made some bad decisions, but didn't get the opportunity to go to teen court. Monetary restitution, and written and verbal apologies or essays. So those are just some of the sanctions. You guys jump in anytime, I'm just trying to boogie. So you want to go and talk about?
Teen court is held after school, usually in the evenings. Raleigh does it several times a month, here, we would just probably offer it one time a month, but it's held at the courthouse. And everyone that is involved are volunteers, adult volunteers, the judge volunteers, and then it's student-led in the other areas.
So the students are the acting attorneys, they are actually, and they are also a part of the jury and the bailiff. So it honestly, the, all being student-led, they run it. They also meet with the parent and the child before teen court begins, and to watch those kids in action, it just blows you away.
All right, so some of the data information that we have, this was just some of the complaint statistics from McDowell County. This was in 1415, just shows you a total of about 180 kids for the year that could be eligible for teen court, except for the Class A1. Now, according to the general statute, those kids could not be a part of teen court. Rodney Weston also sent me some of the complaint statistics for 1516, and there was a total of about 95 up until December of this year. And then he'll have more data for me after that. And then a lot of folks always ask about the recidivism rate. The funny thing is, there's not a lot of information on that, but Wake County did send me just a brief article, but it does highlight the fact that out of all the JCPC programs, that the recidivism rate for teen court is the lowest among all their programs. You can see that was 17.3. So a lot of counties with teen court programs, this has been asked from us several times of all the different counties that have the teen court programs, and as you can see, I think there was a total of, what, 56 up there? All those are east of us, except for Buncombe, and so we definitely see the importance. I've talked to several folks in other counties, and once again, they speak so highly of teen court, not just as a dropout prevention program, but of course, as the student leadership, since it is completely student-led.
Yeah, I think that's a, you know, I think that was a huge selling point for us as well. Obviously, we have new programs at the high school that we're undertaking with fire, EMT, and now law and justice, which is still in the pilot mode. And we saw some amazing opportunities, because McDowell High is really focusing right now, from ninth-grade academy all the way through the seniors, in leadership, and making these students accountable for their education, which I'm a huge believer in. And this is going to give opportunity, not just law and justice students, any student that wants to be a part of it. Obviously, I'll be leaning towards this a bit, my law and justice students, to practice as an attorney, to practice being on the jury, to practice being in defense and prosecution, being on the bench with the judge. And in our model that we're discussing, we would have an adult on the bench as a judge. It may be a magistrate, it could be a police officer, it could be a volunteer, but nonetheless, it's a really good opportunity for these students to take leadership and responsibility for their own education, and be a part of something that's really meaningful, very hands-on. So for me, that's a really interesting part as well.
And they do receive in-depth training, so not just your adult volunteers, but your students. All right, so some of the funding sources, as you can see the list, DJJ, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Department of Public Safety. Grants, we'll talk about in a minute, a couple of grants that we are applying for, school system, county commissioners, city council, United Way, communities and schools. Most of the folks that do teen court have a combination of a couple of those, or several of those, several of those to put teen court in place. Want to talk about the benefits, or Chris?
Yeah, sure.
Benefits to the community.
Guys, I think that we can go, we can read through this, but I think a lot of it, we talked about, early intervention, a way to hold these kids accountable, and not just either sweep something under the rug, but also not necessarily take a kid out in a set of handcuffs. You know, we're concerned as a county, as a community, as a school, with getting kids graduated and getting these students into jobs. Well, you know, you said she said 180, well, that's 180 kids whose resume just got took and put on the bottom of the stack. And we know that especially in today's technology and society, where we have, everything is online, whether it's chats, court, and social... whether it's chats, court, or social media, you know, research is saying that at this point in time, there's never really a way to get away from a charge. Even if something is expunged through the court, all they got to do is hop on to Topics or Facebook or any of these other places where we just, people smear folks all over the place. And research in criminal justice is saying now that it's next to impossible to get anything expunged or taken away. So anytime these kids get charged, all of their names now for Baxter's, for McDowell County Sheriff's Office, for wherever they're going to work, get put on the bottom of the stack. So I think we can see a lot of benefits for the community. Immediate consequences, again, educated use, teens who to volunteer, providing use of opportunity to participate in the decision-making processes, and seeing, wow, there is some consequences for actions. Peer influence and channeling, engaging youth and community to partnership towards a response to juvenile crime. So there's a ton of benefits for the community.
Do we have time when we can show them? I could send it to you. This is just teen court in action. It's a video, I can send that to you. So we won't do that in the sake of time. Proposed teen court budget. Let me pull that up real quick. This is something that we're looking at, hoping to be able to do, the school year 1718, with a total of $36,200. And of course, that is just an estimate. And that's something I'd be glad to send you at some point. Also wanted to kind of compare that with Wake County. Of course, they are a lot bigger than us, but something that they, in their budget, their total budget is $178,000.
How many kids go through the Wake deal program?
It's about 500, 600 kids.
How many will they have in a month on their docket? We talked about this, because we talked about how.
They have teen court twice a month, is that right?
Yeah.
Twice a month.
Maybe there's like 10 to 12.
Yeah.
It's not near as many as you would think looking at that number. Natalie and I sat down with that number, looked at, what's their bottom line down here?
178,000.
We looked at that budget, we thought, that is not necessary, obviously, for this county. Even if we had their number coming through, even if we had 10 per night on the docket. Anyway, I think, you know, this is run, this is run by a nonprofit.
How many other counties are doing this, or helping in this?
Nearly 60 counties across North Carolina. The majority.
Yes.
The majority of North Carolina counties have a teen court.
And do you have any success numbers?
Well, and that's what we were looking at, at the recidivism rates. I mean, to me, to me, success is measured in recidivism rates. Are these kids going out and doing this again? The only data that we could collect was to see with Wake County, out of all their programs, what program was the most successful with regards to recidivism rates. You can't like go to a database online, whether it's through JCPC or any other database and go, recidivism rates for teen court. The data is just not being kept. Why? I have no idea. We would like to know those numbers, but Natalie, Natalie Mary's done all the legwork on the research and the numbers. We've traveled all over state, met with folks, and those numbers are just not available. But to me, if you wanted to measure success in that regard, you'd have to look at the recidivism rate. But for me, the success is kind of measured in the intangible factor of the opportunities that were provided, even if it's for one kid. I mean, I can say anything, I know you guys too, of more than one time when I was in high school, that I could have been easily walked out in a set of handcuffs by a deputy sheriff doing something stupid. But here I am today, by the grace of God, you know, because I got a lot of opportunities given to me, much less if I'd have come through high school in 2016.
I've seen situations in the past couple of years that I wish this had have been around.
Oh, yes.
Absolutely. So to us, that's how we kind of measure success, and that's almost intangible, but the only other way would be your recidivism rates.
Chris, who, because one question I had, the most successful, I guess, county, I don't know how, here again, I guess it's hard to under-chart that, but I guess one of the bigger counties that would have good success rates, who is the primary funding sources for that? For the, say, the most successful counties out there doing this?
It's a blend.
It is.
It's a blend of monies. JCPC, and she could tell you more about this, but you got to petition JCPC and show them your program, show them a proposed budget, and they'll say, okay, we'll give you X amount. And then some of those folks also go to their county commissioner and say, we have this amount. It's a bank borrowed steal from everybody we've seen.
It's a combination of what we've seen.
Does the, would, are school boards getting involved in funding something too, maybe because of the component of the law and justice program that you're looking to?
I'm sure they will be. Mr. Garrett has been involved in this process as well. Natalie and I are also writing a grant with the Governor's Crime Commission, and if we receive that, it's good for two years. And then in February, we will start the JCPC grant as well to help with funding. And we do plan to present to the city council as well.
Are the old cops grants, which were federal grants, are they still available?
I don't know.
Ah, I don't know. That's something we could look into. So we're going to really see what kind of funding we can get from Governor's Crime Commission and JCPC, and then go from there. But I do know, like Chris said, that the other counties that are successful, they do a combination. So it's not just all JCPC, they use a little bit of everybody.
It's so hard to get a feel for this program, and Barry and I have talked about this quite a bit, it's so hard to get a feel for this program. 16 years I've been law enforcement, and even when we were talking about getting the data, until we walked down there to Wake County and saw how it was ran, it made such an impression on me. And I would encourage, encourage any of you folks, I'm sure we'll be making another trip down at some point in time. Encourage you folks to jump in the car with us and go down. I'm telling you, 16 years of law enforcement, I've never been so impressed with something that would make a difference in a community as how Wake County has grown there. It's really impressive. It's just, it's hard to get a feel from this, seeing just this, even watching the YouTube video. You got to get down there and meet these folks, these retired judges who are coming in and are so energetic about it, and just, it's really amazing.
How far away from presenting your, I see you got your cost to propose budget for the program. How close are you in presenting to the juvenile crime prevention group? Is that it?
JCPC. How far away from presenting JCPC?
Yeah.
You mean the grant?
Yeah, how, what's your timetable?
Well, the grant, it opens up till January. And then, so we will start applying in actually February.
And does the grant, does it require you to show how, I guess it does, how you're going to pay for it? Or that's your, you're just paying for the whole grant?
Yeah.
Did you ask the JCPC for just part of their annual funding? As far as like what they?
But you're saying they'll get it.
Divide among the years?
Sorry.
Programs?
No.
The grant will cover the first two?
The Governor's Crime Commission grant will cover two years.
Okay.
If we get that, yes. If we didn't.
Okay, well, that's good.
So there's a lot of ifs right now. I know there's a lot of ifs.
You've got to, you might, you ask a good question, because I'm not sure yet if we have to include in there how else we will pay or who will help us in that, in the funding as a part of the grant.
I mean, they're going to look, your numbers are going to be there to show proof that that program works for JCPC.
Oh, yes.
So I'm not worried about that.
Yeah.
I think they could give you some funding. I just, I tell you, they could fund this program. They're going to fund some of these other programs that see one person. And we're going to see a lot of kids. I think it's more valuable there.
Yeah.
Ashley, what's, if we did not went ahead and just endorsed it, would that help with the grant? If the board of commissioners would vote to write a letter of endorsement or a resolution in favor of the program, would that be, would that help your grant?
Yes, that would be awesome.
Okay. And then we can always look and see where you're at if you're not successful in obtaining the two-year grant. We could always come back to the table then. You guys?
I'm in favor of doing that, if that will help y'all. And then look at, look at.
And I just want to say as well, I just want to add to this, and I wish we had a list of folks thus far who have. Ted Bell, who is the district attorney, this district is head over heels, he went with us to Raleigh.
Yes.
Ted rode down with us to Raleigh.
Loved it.
And District Attorney Bell is head over heels. His entire office, he said, we will give you whatever resources you need, if you need Kent Brown, Michelle, these other folks digging in and helping you. He went down and saw it, and I knew when Ted walked out the door, I could see his wheels turning. I knew when Ted Bell was impressed, I said, there's a man who knows his way around a courtroom and knows the system. And if he's that sold on it.
I really like it. I really like it.
I know some judges that are looking for ways to do this for kids. They're tired of seeing them over and over and over.
Randy is excited. Mary's talking to him on several occasions about it.
Ballgames. But yes, Randy's very excited.
Well, let's do this, let's make this official then, and don't do it back at census. Is there a motion, do you hear a motion from the board?
I make a motion. So I think.
Okay, discussion, all those that favor the motion say aye. Aye, opposed, light sign, okay? And staff will get with you and get that to you.
Sure.
All right, guys, we appreciate it. Very, very informative, great information to have, great information. And we hope you're very successful and you get the two-year grant.
Sorry about that.
Okay, at this time, we have our six o'clock appointment, and we have Molly with us today or tonight, this evening, and she's going to introduce a staff person. So Molly, go right ahead, ma'am, floor is yours.
Thank you. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to introduce our new employee. I first want to say that aligning the efforts of Keep McDowell Beautiful with Cooperative Extension, I think was a smart and strategic move. I applaud whoever's idea it was to initiate and follow through with this idea. North Carolina State University Extension does have a strategic priority that addresses environmental stewardship as well as natural resources management. So what that means to me is that not only can we enhance what Keep McDowell Beautiful currently does and what is accomplished historically, but we can also enhance that, including more ideas as the need arises. So I'm really excited about this position, and again, I applaud whoever's idea it was to align Keep McDowell Beautiful with Cooperative Extension. The newly hired Agriculture and Natural Resources Program Assistant, who will be overseeing Keep McDowell Beautiful, has a degree in communications and media relations at Penn State University at Erie. He has spent a lifetime in Boy Scouts of America, earning hit the rank of Eagle Scout. He has worked as Executive Director for Boy Scouts in Erie, Pennsylvania, Cleveland, Ohio, as well as Lincoln and Gaston Counties in North Carolina. And he currently volunteers with a Cub Scout troop in Glenwood. Not only that, but he has had experience in media. His most recent job experience was with Garnet Publishing over in Asheville. And he has had a lot of experience working with youth and volunteers, and I think those are qualities that will serve him well in this role. He enjoys the outdoors. He spends his spare time hunting and fishing. And something he told me was that Marion and McDowell County give him the hometown feel that he and his family were looking for. So I was, and I can relate to that because I've said that before. This county makes me feel like I'm at home, so that's why I've settled here. So now I'll introduce you to Mr. Matthew Bernison.
Matthew, good to have you now. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. I didn't have anything prepared, but I'd like to thank you gentlemen.
Hey, honesty is the best policy, so go right ahead.
I grew up in a real small town in western Pennsylvania, hunting and fishing with my dad and my sisters, and moved to North Carolina about three years ago, and we were living over in the Denver area on Lake Norman, close to my in-laws. And we started shopping around western North Carolina, because we spent most of our time up this way hunting and fishing, and we visited a lot of towns. Silva and Murphy and small towns. And we came to Fourth of July in Marion, and we found ourselves right at the, in the parking lot of the fire station, watching the fireworks, and we're like, wow, we really fit in here. We're walking around and talking to folks, and my wife's just like, well, why don't you get a job up here? So I made the mistake of getting a job in Asheville.
Oh, my.
Yeah, I worked for the Nashville Citizen Times for two years, managing newspaper distribution, not working with volunteers like I did while we were living in Marion. I volunteered as a cub master in Glenwood, and was looking for an opportunity to make that my profession. I worked as an executive for Boy Scouts in Erie, Pennsylvania, in Cleveland, Ohio, and ran Lincoln County for a year for Boy Scouts. And I was looking to get back, back into that, because I really enjoy the passion that volunteers have. When you work with professionals, they're there because they need to be there. When you work with volunteers, they're there because they want to be there. And I feel that this opportunity gives me a chance to work, work with kids in a way that I didn't always get to do with Boy Scouts. I spent a lot of time raising money and not a lot of time doing program development. And I feel that this opportunity, especially with the Cooperative Extension, gives me a chance to work in the schools and work with kids. In the short time that I've been here, I've been developing programs in Glenwood Elementary, Marion Elementary, and West Marion, excuse me, where a lot of the kids that I work with in Cub Scouts are also, also working. So I'm working with some of the principals that I already had a relationship with in order to do some pilot programs this spring, and then hopefully expand that to the rest of the school district coming next year. This last Friday, I had the chance to work with Ronnie Harvey, who some of you may know, and spent the day with him doing our TARP day over at the transfer station. Ronnie's a great guy, gave me, gave me a hard time a few times.
He's a good example of a local McDowell County person.
Yes, sir.
I learned more from Ronnie about McDowell County and the six hours I was there than I had in the previous two years I've been here. He's a great guy. And I'm looking forward to working with more folks like that and getting to know, getting to know everybody in McDowell County. And I really appreciate this opportunity for myself and for my family.
Well, we're glad you're here. I want to know something. You said you and your big hunter and your sisters hunted, you hunted, who's a better shot, you or your sisters?
My sister, Alyssa.
Okay.
And my daughter, Dylan. I mean, I put a 22 rifle in her hands and we were shooting beer cans, and I couldn't believe what she could do at 50 yards.
Well, now, we've got a board member who's a former Army sniper sitting right here down. Were you Army sniper?
No.
Marine, Marine.
No, I was, I was in the Navy. I wasn't even in Army.
Well, he's pretty good with a gun. I've heard him say that before up somewhere.
Glad to have you here.
All right. Good to have you, McDowell County. We're glad you settled here, and we're sort of biased. It's a great place to live, to work, to hunt, to fish, to walk, to shop. It's just a great place to be. Good to have you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Molly, just introduce him to the liver mush from Pennsylvania. He may not know what that is.
Hunter's liver mush.
Hunter's.
All right. With that being said, let's move to item A under Old Business. This would be a convenience center update. Mr. Weig, go ahead, sir.
Yes, if Madam Clerk can help me with the PowerPoint. I wanted to just show you a couple of pictures, I guess to prove that we have finally paved the two convenience centers, Crooked Creek and Dodgersville, which we had budgeted partially last year and to finish out this year. I just wanted to sort of a kudos for the board, something that we have been trying to do for quite a, quite a long time. A lot of community interest, obviously, to get this done, and it is done. Just wanted to get it out there and so you could see it. So it's, I think the residents are very pleased with the.
That's all the transfer stations, right?
They are all paved now, yes, sir.
That's good.
So sometimes you just want to toot a horn for doing the right thing, so we did get that accomplished.
That's a good thing, too. Ray Air will call you for that.
Okay, thanks, Ashley. Let's move to item B, under Old Business, Water Projects Update. Go ahead, sir.
It's hard to do pictures of water lines, but maybe we'll figure out a way. But we have two water lines nearing completion. One is the Universal Water Line that will serve that facility. It is very close. There's some tie-on work that has to be done. Spoke to the city manager a few days ago just to nail down the vinyl details, that sort of thing. But we are excited to get, get that project completed and move on there. The other project, which is much, much more involved and bigger, is the Nebo Water Line. That one probably will wrap up in January as well. The contractor is doing the meter setting right now, and there's quite a few more connections to do there, so that'll take, take some time. But another great project there where we're serving several businesses, Subtlety Grading, Subtles Grading, Atkins Transportation, U.S. Forest Service helped participate with funding, and they will be served. And there's also some opportunity there for business development and redevelopment because of that water line. Because water supply is so much of an issue there. So I know this board and prior boards have made a commitment to extend that line, and it's definitely to be praised. Didn't mention in the memo that we have talked to the engineer about our next steps as far as more pipes. And so we're still waiting on estimates from them to present to you for some options. So hopefully those will be forthcoming in the next few weeks. Also heard recently that there will be the public hearing, if I get the date right, for the reclassification of Lake James. We've talked about that for many, many years. You may recall that Mr. Harmon and I went to Raleigh a couple of months ago. The State Environmental Management Commission agreed to move forward with the reclassification of Lake James as a water source. And so that process now comes out here. They will bring a hearing officer and their staff to McDowell County. And they will say, general public, this is what the county is proposing, what do you think? And, you know, the public has an opportunity to speak. They will, the state will notify folks who will be impacted. It will be at McDowell Tech on January 5th at 6:00 p.m. And so we'll get that date out to you gentlemen. And the public will be made aware as well for them to share their opinions on it. Assuming that goes well, it will go back to the full Environmental Management Commission in Raleigh, where they will vote to reclassify or not to for Lake James. So that process is very involved. Mr. Harmon, again, and I are meeting next Friday, this Friday actually, with the engineer who's working on the process to get an update and determine the next steps. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes, but I wanted to share that with you definitely.
Okay, thank you, Ash. Let's move to our next item, Facilities Update, item C under Old Business, go ahead, Ms. Wood.
Right, just a really brief update. We have been working as the courthouse, phase one, or however you want to call it, is wrapping up, or is wrapped up with the renovation of lower-level courtroom, the elevator, the security cells. The courthouse looks great, but there's work to be done. We've talked about replacing the windows, modern heating and air system. So we're not done with everything. So that was sort of the first phase to be done. Staff will meet with the architect, hopefully by the end of this month, if not early January, to get an update on estimates for the windows and heating and air and the parking deck study. An outside, third-party firm is determining if the parking deck can support new construction. So obviously, we want to make sure we can build on it before we do that. It's taken longer than we had hoped, but it will take place on December 12th. It's a very involved process, and they wanted to make sure they had plenty of time to be able to do it. They're actually going to use sonar to scan the whole parking deck, and they will do core sampling, so it's a pretty detailed process. We've also talked a little bit about moving to offices, and that's still to be determined. So we'll meet again with the architect and bring back a recommendation on moving forward with that as well. Again, a lot going on. Staff stays busy on these priorities for the board, and we want to make sure you're up to date on them.
Okay, thanks, Ash. Let's go to item D under Old Business. We have two items under this, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Right, the first item we talked about last month. The McDowell House, probably about a year and a half or two, had two 20th century wings, I'll say, taken off. And when they built those wings, they used barn timbers. I think Mr. Walker was involved in that. Not, that's Mr. Walker, but Red Walker. But they had brought in barn beams to do that. And when the deconstruction happened, the contractor took those and stored them for the county, since we didn't have a ready place to store them. Someone has approached us with interest to buy those. And we looked into whether they were feasible to go into the main house during a restoration, which they were not. And you have in your packet pictures of the beams. They've actually been, unfortunately, I think at one time they were being taken care of, but they've been out in the weather for quite a while. And if they're not purchased, they will probably deteriorate pretty quickly. So Mr. Mike Lucas has approached the county to buy those. He has seen them firsthand. And you have the pictures there in the description from Mr. DePoyster. And he has put in an offer of $750 for those beams. So if you're interested in approving that bid, it's essentially like any other bid. We would post that and allow folks to upset the bid. And if we don't have any upset bids, it would go to Mr. Lucas.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to post it.
Discussion, all those that favor the motion say aye. Aye, opposed, light side, okay? Thanks, gentlemen, okay, Ms. Wood, continue on.
Next one is a request from Sheriff Green to allow Mr. Lynn Green to purchase his sidearm and to receive his badge upon his retirement. And you have the resolution there as well. And so I must say that Mr. Green can't vote on it since he would benefit from it, but obviously the rest of you can. But Mr. Green is recommending the approval.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Pleasure to approve resolution to authorize a donation, county manager.
Second, discussion, all those that favor the motion say aye. Aye, opposed, light side, okay? Thanks, gentlemen. Let's move to item E, under Old Business, Policy Discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Wood.
Yes, sir. Last month, you received a lot of information, and some of it may have been information overload. But staff has been meeting for several months on tweaking some of our standard operating procedures and some of our policies. Some of it was based on direction from the board. Some of it was based on experiences, just in everyday work. Some of it, you know, sometimes laws change. And so various reasons that we wanted to look at these. And so what we did, as we have given you the first document in your packet, is about 40 pages, and it's the entire personnel policy. So what, if you have seen it, hopefully you've had a chance to read it. There's red text where there have been changes. And you'll notice there's not a lot of red text. And so, you know, we may change a word here and there. The probationary period stopped on that. We were at 24 months. The state had gone to 24 months, and so we went to 24 months. Now the state is back to 12 months, so we're recommending going back to 12. So again, another issue where we're trying to match up with what state and other counties are doing. Some of the other changes, just quickly, reinstatement for employees that have left. We're recommending that any credited accrued sick time, that they be allowed to take that back, assuming that it wasn't transferred and used somewhere else at a public employer. So sometimes an employee will go to a private employer, you know, say, leave here and go work for Walmart. Obviously, they can't transfer their benefits there since it's a private employer. So they essentially stay on a piece of paper, usually pay it out on vacation, but sick leave just sits there. And so we're recommending as an enticement to get some of these people back, that that open-ended. Because we keep a record permanently of former employees.
Do we, if we hire an employee from another county, we accept their sick time?
We do.
So that just makes sense there.
Few other tweaks as far as post-accident testing. Clarified some of the work week periods. Does create attendance absenteeism and tardiness policy, which we didn't have before. So those are the major highlights under the personnel policy. The maternity leave was changed to get that and to be consistent with federal law. And we, I will point this one out, this is essentially, there's two new policies under Section 8.01 and Section 9. 8.01 is educational leave with pay. This has not necessarily been that much of a problem for us, but there have been instances in other employers where a city or county have expended vast amounts of money to train employees. And I'll pick on the Building Inspections Department. This isn't, again, this hasn't happened at the department, but we invest a lot of training money in those employees. And so we hope they would stay a long time, but yet we're located near a large market. And sometimes that attracts employees for higher benefits and higher pay, those sorts of things. Where it's been an issue sometimes in some employers is that you get people out of college or wherever that come in, they get the training, and they immediately leave for a higher-paying job. So essentially, we act as a farm team for your Charlottes and your Winston-Salem's and Asheville's. And we can send them a bill for our training that we've spent thousands of dollars on. It's essentially, you know, it's benefiting the organization if they stay, but if they don't, it's just benefiting that person. So this creates sort of a clawback provision. If an employee was to leave within 12 months of receiving that certification, they would have to do a payback. It protects the county and the county taxpayer. And again, this is, I can't name a single person that has done this. Again, we've had people leave, but it's not been this exact situation. But we wanted to, I guess, prevent it from happening.
Is that probably standard statewide?
It's become a lot more standard, especially in areas like ours that are near urban markets. Because you will have folks that work here, or Mitchell County, or Yancey, or wherever, that as soon as they get those certifications, they're gone.
I personally don't blame anybody for ever improving herself, but I just don't want them to abuse our taxpayers' funding to do it.
It's like the DSS attorney. We were fortunate to have one that's been there for a while now, but they had a lot of turnover because a lot of times attorneys come in, and that's the start point for a resume, and they can move on, like you're saying, to something bigger salary-wise.
The other major addition in this part was we create a funeral leave section under our leave area. And this is just an additional small benefit. Hopefully, it's not one that employees would use that much because of what it is. But it creates three paid days that employees can take when there's a funeral of a family member. And this is something that we're seeing more and more of. There's just something that we're, employees don't have to worry about taking limited sick or leave time or vacation time. And again, hopefully, it's not something that will be used a lot for what it is for funeral. So for the personnel policy, those are the major changes I wanted to highlight. There's a few others, if you had any questions, and I can go, there's about five standard operating procedures I want to touch on.
Actually, under Section 2B, county manager exempt from provisions related to the hiring, disband, action dismissal, or any other provisions that conflict with his or her employment agreement.
Right.
Refresh me, county managers, and that will employ...
That's right. That's why that section is in there. I don't gain any protections from this, and I don't lose any.
If we fired him, he could only appeal to us.
You could fire me right now if you wanted to.
Well, we're not looking to do that, I was just saying, that was red, and I said that was new.
That wasn't in there before, that's right, I didn't mean to skip over it. Most, I'll be honest, a lot of those that we looked at, they just exempt the county manager completely from the entire personnel policy. And there, and you could do that, I'm not asking for it, because there's items in here that it would make it look like the manager's trying to go above the system or whatever, and that's not the intent. That's just to say that you don't have to go through all these steps. It's more for your benefit than mine.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, I thought, that's new, I thought.
Right, it is. It's to say that you don't have to go through, I don't have agreements procedure and those sorts of things. So it's just spelling it out.
Well, you're a good county manager, to add that, that wasn't in there.
So those are the major changes there I wanted to highlight. And if you look at, we have the SOPs, just, that was about 160 pages, and I don't think you wanted to look through all of that. We just pulled out the ones recommended for changes. Get back down to that. The longevity pay policy, there's a slight change there.
Actually, where in the, I might have missed it.
That's on page 82, so it's quite a ways down.
The, in the document, the section that would give the supervisor or the department head more lead weight in regard to scheduling of hours, is that, where's that in?
That is, that is...
I say staff did a great job in the changes, I mean, you guys highlighted the red and getting great and making that easily found.
And there are a few typos that are not...
It's on page 58.
Faster than I am. So we outlined what the standard work week is, because that was a little unclear. But we did add a sentence that department heads do have some flexibility in making sure employees work those hours that are required. But also, it's not where it has to be or in certain hours. And it probably needs to be stated, and the different department heads know that, you know, they're not going to have employees working, you know, from midnight to 8:00 a.m. or something. You know, this is to give them some flexibility to work within the rest of the policy and with federal and state law.
Okay.
Sometimes you like to have a little bit of a catch-all in there.
Other comments or questions for Ashley?
If not, we'll mention the longevity pay. And it makes it look like the rate for 25 or more years went up, and that's not the case. I'm not sure why that is red. There's no recommended increase. But there were some sentences removed there that were unclear. The condolence policy, again, this is just a small token. We did add grandparents, again, doesn't affect many employees, but...
You'll have employees that were raised by their grandparents?
And that was one of the situations that we've encountered. And we've had to say, I'm sorry, you're not covered. So again, just, it's a small token to show that there's a notice of their work.
And on the maternity, that's good, it's in there. But you have the option of the shared leave where somebody can donate it, which is good.
Right, and speaking of, in the standard operating procedures section, there's some clarification from the shared leave policy. When we started looking at shared leave policies from surrounding counties and elsewhere in the state, most if not all let it come into effect after one year of employment. We've had instances where employees have started work and almost immediately asked for shared leave. And so staff is recommending that one-year situation.
Again, it's probably statewide.
It is very common from what we've seen in our research.
It doesn't go into effect until after a year.
Right. Right, that's right. The first sentence under, paragraph under A changed a little bit. Section B creates a little bit of a due process for employees. So the department head essentially acts as the gatekeeper. They will review the request, and then forward it to the county manager, actually make a recommendation to the manager for approval. If the manager denies it for whatever reason, they can appeal to the board of commissioners. So it creates a little bit of due process.
That's the way it should go.
So that would, in my opinion, be a closed session discussion, since you have some pretty important details that we wouldn't want to share with the public. The next item involves placement of election signs on county property. This is something when we got into the campaign season that we realized that it was a well-intended policy, but the language wasn't clear, so we made it clear that signs are allowed on county property. Where one-stop voting is happening, and it has a removal, which almost everybody removes signs almost immediately after an election.
That was one of my questions, when we had, we were leasing this building for the courthouse, there were signs put up all around on that property over there. Somebody mentioned it to me, and I said, "Well, technically, we're leasing, but it still belongs to," and somebody had mentioned that.
And that could be something, if we ever lease property again, they have to follow county policies in that regard, was something we noticed. The next policy was called McDowell County Snow Policy. Another area where we, when we did research, we found that most if not all counties do not require employees to take time when the office is closed. There is a fairness issue to that. If the chairman and I talk and say, "Yes, the roads are in terrible shape, we need to keep offices closed for everybody's safety," penalizing those employees, they didn't cause it to snow. So before, we were making them take a vacation or sick day, and this takes away that requirement.
Am I misunderstanding, the reading of that, will be, not be?
No, that's a typo. It should say will not be required.
Okay.
See that before. There's a few typos, I'm glad you see it, it's proof, you're reading it. That will be fixed before. So those are the changes recommended in the standard operating procedures tonight. So you've got the entire personnel policy with tweaks, and then four or five standard operating procedure.
Ashley, a quick question.
Yes.
Where in the document is, I get calls from DSS workers who have to man emergency shelters, and they, they say that they're women and they can't get out, and I know that our sheriff's department's great, and they'll go pick them up a lot of times in the vehicles, but that, that's an item of concern for a lot of those ladies over there. And I guess that's probably a state issue, because I always find out the state's the one who mandates...
The shelters are required to be mandated by DSS employees.
And so, it's a state issue, not a county, not a county issue, but a state issue, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And that, and hopefully, they're making that clear when they're hired in that position, that part of your job is to work these shelters, and if not, I'm always can guarantee you, they're told that when they're hired, that, that's a possibility.
Because if you go into it knowing it upfront, that's, that's what needs to happen.
This is one of the deals when a disaster happens, you don't want all county staff to go home, because you're going to need them. And one of the shelter operations is very crucial in a disaster, we need to train people there, so, I mean, it's got to happen.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the policy changes that were presented to us tonight. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed, like side. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move to new business, administrative items audit update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. We had a few tipping fee waivers. The first, and we could have had Mr. Keller here to talk about the Clear Creek Fire, but just briefly there, had a great response from the community, and I know the incident management team was very impressed with Southern Hospitality. I know they had the letter of the editor in the newspaper and put videos out. They were very impressed with the folks here and the support they had. Related to that, the team was based at Universal for the two weeks they were here, and they used one of our dumpsters to accept their trash. And so, we're asking that the trash be waived, the disposal be waived for that one. And Chairman Walker had mentioned, I did not get the name of the church, but there's a church that is tearing down a house, I believe it's here in town, Zion Street.
Councilman Billy Martin came to me, and the church is above the tractor spire on the hill, and there's an old dilapidated house up there, and they've got, they've got a contractor who's going to tear it down, but at a greatly reduced price. I mean, he's not making hardly anything, just trying to help the church out. And I said, "Well, our board has to approve any kind of waiver," so contacted their county manager, and he's putting on here.
So those are the two requests that we have.
I'll make a motion to approve both waivers.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye and opposed, like side. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, moving on to project closeout and budget amendments. You have one closeout for school project fund 46, which were three roofing projects at various schools in the county. Then the amendments, you have SP1 that is tied into that school project fund, changes the debt payments for that project. GF14 transfers funds from the water and sewer line item and fund balance to the Harmony Grove Road Water Project, which we talked about earlier. GF15 appropriates reimbursements for services, grants, and prior year reimbursements in emergency services. GF16 appropriates reserved and received revenue for the school system and foothills transportation. This had the ABC tax that you've approved earlier for the program that Ms. Gooch talked about earlier in the year. GF17 separates funds from the volunteer and keep McDowell Beautiful Coordinator positions to reflect their new departments. Again, we had one staff member essentially doing two jobs, and they were, it was split into two different departments, and that fully realizes that change. The next is GF18, it transferred between light items due to a truck rental. We have two garbage trucks that are on the road constantly, six days a week, and we had the unfortunate incident to have both being repaired at the same time. So we had to rent one from a local company to get us through.
Was it a pretty good one?
It was.
Is it something we might look at, at a used rate later on?
Well, we don't need it right now, but maybe at one, one time in the future. I will mention, since I brought it up, that the City of Marion helped us out during this period, so we're very thankful for their help as well. GF19 transfer between light items and appropriates additional revenue at DSS. GF20 appropriates additional revenue at the senior center. And GF21 transfers in various departments in amounts under 3,000.
Okay, gentlemen, any comments, questions? What's pleasure to the board?
Most approve SP1, GF14 through GF21.
Close call.
And also the resolution, the closeout resolution project.
Okay, you got a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye and opposed, like side. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move to the next item. Is that everything, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's move to the next item under...
Well, I'm sorry, I had on their audit update, I wanted to mention that Chairman Walker and I met with staff and our auditing firm last week, and the preliminary results are very, very positive on our audit for this past year. And so, I guess, congratulations on, on that, and the fund balance is looking very nice. Had a very good report on staff, so that's what we want to hear. The firm will be here next month to present it, and so, we like to have a positive meeting, so it should be a good report next month. So I just wanted to advise the rest of the board on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. Let's move to the next item under our new business, that would be board appointments. And you've got a list, every, Commissioner Green, one, one of the good things about being a commissioner, or not so good, you serve on multiple committees. So people who think that you're a commissioner and you go to one meeting once a month, that's not completely accurate. There's a lot of subcommittee work that goes into being a county commissioner, which I could get a good AMF from our board members on that right now. But anyway, we've got the list of all the different boards, if I can get to mine. Can you get the page then? No, I can't.
I can't. I'm clicking.
Right, delegates.
And then go, don't miss nothing, first page.
What page is that on?
105.
Word four.
There you go. Phew. Okay. So at this point in December, the, the board always, is there, is there any commissioner? First of all, if there's no change in a city commissioner, most of the time, everybody keeps the current boards around. But in, in the event there is a change in a new commissioner coming on board, it's a good time for us to say, "Hey, I would like to maybe come off a committee and maybe look at going on another committee," and so, that's what we do. And so, as a result, staff has compiled the different committees that we serve on, and Commissioner Hollifield was on two or three committees?
Utility Committee, Education Committee.
Mr. Chair, can I make a statement?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to come off the juvenile crime prevention, it's not listed on there, but if it's so up with the board, I'd like to go on the joint utility committee.
Okay. All right. Any commissioner, you guys all right with that? Sound good? All right. There, by consensus then, Commissioner Crawford, or do we need to vote on this? Ashley?
That's up to you guys, however you want to proceed.
Typically, just...
Okay, you've got it then. Now, that means, with your background in law enforcement, Lynn, that'd be an excellent committee for you to be on.
Big lad, JCPenney.
All right, so Lynn might have heard to be on that committee. The MEDA, and I know that Commissioner Brown stated he's got a desire to be on that one. Also, Commissioner Crawford, my understanding is too, that there's been some people down in that committee that have requested Mr. Brown to be on it too. So...
I'm fine if Tony wants to do it.
Okay.
It's fine with me.
I'd like to, I'd like to be on that board, based on the fact that I've been asked by some of the members.
Okay. All right, by consensus, Tony's going on that board. Is that all the boards, gentlemen?
There was KND.
Okay.
Mr. Hollifield was on that as well.
They meet Wednesdays at noon. You want to be on that one, Lynn?
Do that.
Okay. Commissioner Green to be on that one. And then Commissioner Crawford's been great on the Isothermal Planning and Development Commission. I've not been able to go with three little girls, I stay tied up in that. Now, Commissioner Crawford's going to find out all about that when that, how many more months now, Commissioner Crawford?
One and a half.
One and a half months away from the big day. But anyway, he's been very gracious in going down and attending that for us, and Matt, would you be interested in doing that?
I'll give it a shot.
Okay, thank you, Matt. So Matt's going to be that one. Do we have all of the boards covered?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, let's move to our next item on the agenda under new business. This is our voting delegate for the Legislative Goals Conference that meets January the 12th through 13th in Raleigh, North Carolina. And we have to approve a voting delegate. Commissioner Hollifield was our voting delegate prior, and does any commissioner wish to go to Raleigh during those dates and be a voting delegate? I won't be able to attend.
I normally would go, but I've got a baby there that week.
Your birthday close to home.
Yeah, I've got ethics, maybe, and...
Can you go, Tom?
I can't, I've got two real big jobs going on right now, and I can't get...
Lynn, can you go?
Gentlemen, do y'all need somebody to go with this?
All right, Lynn, a lot of follows you, my friend, if you can do it.
As long as you bring me something back from NC State, we're in good shape.
How about a group or...
Now, we have to vote on this, though.
Right.
So do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Commissioner Green.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye and opposed, like side. Okay? Thank you, Lynn, for being able to do that. Item D, under new business, this is the contract. Mr. Wood, go right ahead, sir.
Right. Last month, you had the presentation from pictometry, which is the enhanced mapping system. You asked to see a contract and have staff and the attorney look at it, which has been done. Spoke to Mr. Coats shortly before the meeting. He had no strong objections to the contract. He said it was one of the more technical that he's read. He did point out a few items that we've looked at and addressed, and he is satisfied with the, with the contract as presented. And so, staff and county attorney would recommend with those in mind for approval.
Okay, what's pleasure to the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye and opposed, like side. Okay? At this time, we'll move to citizen comment.
We do have tax matters.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ashley.
Your typical releases, refunds. There is a resolution, should highlight as well. You're required to approve review officers for map law changes, and this is a standard practice. So, it's on page 128, where we're required to bring a list of folks so approved to review maps, and so, we're just getting the current staff on the list. So if you had approved that resolution...
Okay, what's pleasure to the board?
Make a motion to approve the resolution establishing review officers.
Okay. Discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye and opposed, like side.
And apart from the refunds, et cetera, you do have one late exemption for the elderly, and he was unaware of the June 1st deadline, so...
Okay. Comments, questions? What's pleasure to the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye and opposed, like side. Okay, gentlemen, we've got our, this is re-bills. What's pleasure to the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye and opposed, like side. Okay? Now, it's good to citizen comment. We have no one who has signed up to speak tonight, so let's move to reports and communications. Mr. Wood, go right ahead, sir.
Right. I wanted to communicate a few things. Wanted to mention, Commissioner Brown had asked a couple of days ago an update on the shooting range, and I did want to mention that it's not a project that we've forgotten. I did have a meeting, it was before the fires, and so, the Forest Service and Wildlife Resources I think covered up with fires the last couple of weeks, but I did meet with them, I think, early November, to talk about the project and to make sure they're still interested in helping us, and they are, and they've, they are looking at sites that may be of interest to us. And I know there's other folks looking for sites that might, might qualify. So again, that's a, a project that will take some time to find a suitable site that can be tested, but the state is still interested, federal government is still interested, and we're still interested, so we continue to look for that, that site that will work, so...
We, I mean, we find the site, I'm very interested in making this happen, and I'm even to a step saying that if those groups won't, won't help out, we got to figure out how to make this work. I think the public wants it big time.
Contrary to, you know, what, you know, there's probably some talk out there that we've already, we're already fixed on a particular site, and I think that may have been an idea that's floating around through the community, but we're not set on a particular site at this, at this time. I think we need to make sure everyone does know that. But, yeah, we're, we're looking at a lot of different places.
Okay, any other items, Mr. Wood?
Did want to mention, just to advise you of the holiday, the Christmas... Did want to mention, just to advise you of the holiday, the Christmas schedule, holiday including New Year's, the offices will be closed here for, for Christmas, for December 23rd, 26th, and 27th, and closed on January 2nd for New Year's. There are some exceptions to that. Obviously, EMS and Sheriff's Office will be operating through those days, so our thoughts are definitely with them and their families for, you know, missing, missing Christmas and being with their families. But transfer station, convenience centers will be open on December 26th, the day after Christmas. I think one year, years ago, the mistake was made of closing the day after Christmas, and it's never done again unless it's a Sunday, so we won't do that again, but it will be open on the 26th for folks. So, did want to get that out there. And those closures will be advertised if they haven't been already.
And also, the Christmas party. Make sure to mark your calendars.
That's right.
And has the manger scene been?
It should be up today.
Okay.
There was a delay. The city had asked that we hold off for a day or two because of the event that took place on, I think, last Thursday. There was a concern that people might trample over the display and hurt themselves and hurt the display, so staff put that out partially on Friday, I think the rest's a day, so.
Okay.
I think new lights too, so hopefully.
Good, good. We've got calls on that. Want to know where the manger scene was at, which is a good thing.
I'll admit, we actually had the wreath hung on the courthouse, and they noticed it was obstructing, and God, we trust, so they made sure to go back and, and move it. So, if anyone has called about that, it has been moved to not. We're very sensitive about what we do with decorations.
Okay. We've got our agenda covered for tonight, minus two things. Each year, at this time, we always do our Christmas greeting, so each commissioner can relate to the people in McDowell County and wish them a very Merry Christmas. So, we'll start down here on the end with Matthew. So, Matthew, if you want to leave us out, sir?
Without a doubt, I appreciate each and everything that our county staff does throughout the year, and there'll be those that are working away from their families and being a few past job I had, I know how that feels sometimes, but I can honestly tell you, from my family to yours, we wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Okay.
From my family to yours, to county staff, we'd like to wish them a very Merry Christmas. Appreciate the job that you do throughout the year, and we look forward to the next coming year. God bless you, Merry Christmas.
From myself, my wife, and three girls, we want to wish everyone in McDowell County a very Merry Christmas, and always remember the reason for the season, the birth of a Savior. Mr. Brown?
From my family to yours, I'd like to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and extended Happy New Year.
Mr. Green?
I've traveled a lot of places in my different careers, and I've never found a place that I would rather raise a family than McDowell County. It's just, it's just that kind of place, and I hope that everybody out there remembers why we're here, and it's because of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Merry Christmas to each and everyone.
And, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir. County manager?
I think the manager likes to take the opportunity on behalf of the employees of the county to, to thank this board for the support you give us throughout the year. We have difficult jobs sometimes, but we commit ourselves to public service because that's what we've been called to do, and we definitely thank you for the support. And on behalf of myself and my family, would also wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and hopefully, good things come our way in 2017.
Thank you, Ashley. And our clerk, we don't want to leave her out, very important part of our board, so then clerk, go ahead.
I'd like to wish everyone a very blessed and happy and merry Christmas, and a prosperous New Year with good health.
Amen. All right. And we always read the Christmas account. If Christmas is about the birth of a Savior, Jesus Christ, we, we want to read the Christmas account out of Luke. So, Vice Chairman McPeters will read that Christmas story once again this year.
In Luke, chapter 2, verse 1, it says, "And it came to pass in those days that there went out a decree from Caesar Augustus that all the world should be taxed. And this taxing was first made when Cyrenius was governor of Syria, and all went to be taxed, every one to his own city. And Joseph also went up out of Galilee, up from Galilee out of the city of Nazareth unto Judea, to the city of David, which is called Bethlehem, because he was the house and lineage of David, to be taxed with Mary his espoused wife, being great with child. And so it was that while they were there, the days were accomplished that she should be delivered. And she brought forth her firstborn son, and wrapped him in swaddling clothes, and laid him in a manger, because there was no room for them in the end. And there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flock by night. And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were sore afraid. And the angel said unto them, fear not, for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. For unto you is born this day in the city of David, a Savior, which is Christ the Lord. And this shall be a sign unto you: you shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes, lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel, a multitude of the heavenly host, praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest, and on earth, peace, goodwill toward men. And it came to pass, as the angels were gone away from them into heaven, the shepherds said one to another, let us now go even unto Bethlehem, and see this thing which has come to pass, which the Lord hath made known unto us. And they came with haste, and found Mary and Joseph, and the babe lying in a manger. And when they had seen it, they made known abroad the saying which was told them concerning this child. And all they that heard it wondered of these things which were told them by the shepherds. But Mary kept all these things, and pondered them in her heart. And the shepherds returned glorifying and praising God for all the things that they had heard and seen, and it was told unto them. And when the days were accomplished for the circumcision of the child, his name was called Jesus, which was so named of the angel before he was conceived in the womb."
Thank you, Commissioner McPeters. And one other person in the room that I overlooked, we have our assistant county manager who's with us tonight, and he's, he helps Ashley on a lot of different things, and Ashley was an assistant county manager for many years, and sometimes the, the county manager's the one everybody sees, and I know the work Ashley did behind Chuck. So, yeah, thankless job. So, I want Ron to come forward and also wish the people of McDowell County a Merry Christmas from.
You say give it a time?
Yeah.
First off, I want to thank the board for allowing me to serve. I can't imagine doing anything else. I love working here, was born and raised. But my wife, Christie, and my two kids, Danica and Miles, wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. I'm excited because this is the first Christmas I'll have of my son, and just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and God bless everybody.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, gentlemen, that concludes all of the business we had on the agenda tonight and our Christmas greetings and salutations, and the reading of the birth of Jesus from the Bible. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this time?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign.